Good evening, as you know, at this time of the year, timeline's pretty familiar to us by now, but back in April, I went over with you the budget workshop. We talked about where we were heading and we talked about our current budget. We are at the stage, as you know, the Uniform Budget Act requires us to have a balanced budget before July 1st, and that's what we're working on is adopting it at this time. The other thing I want to remind everybody is in a school budget, it's not advisory like most people think of it as more just an accounting of the use and the sources of the public funds that we get. And so you'll often see us, like we'll do on the 27th, we will go from the original budget to the one we amended in February and we'll amend it one last time at the last possible date in June. And of course, then we'll wait for the audit to see how close we were to the last one. But that's, that's the goal when we do a budget. So tonight is about the 1617 budget, also the public hearing that will follow that, which is today, and then we'll do the formal adoption on the 27th along with the final adjustment to the 1516 budget at that time. So that's where we're going. So I wanted to start with just a little bit of where the revenues all come from. And one of the things we always talk about in the budget is the millage rates. And a couple of things, the 18 mills in the non-homestead shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, that's pretty standard, it's been there for quite a while now. But the second one down, the 1.6814 mills, is our hold harmless millage. And so that one, as you know, back when Prop 8 came in, allows us to generate so much money per student, $415.31 to be exact. And so every year, we have to sit down and figure out about how many students we're going to have, what's the taxable value going to be, how many mills does that let us levy? And then it also turns around and lets us to either make up or give back if we over-collected the year before, so it's always that way. Started originally at about 5.2 mills and it's now got itself to 1.6814. Right after we do this budget, we'll also be sending a resolution to the city because they have to split up the collection. We don't always split it totally equally, not easy to do, because we all have some variation between now and when we turn in the official tax document in September. Last year, so you get an idea in 1516, the millage for the hold harmless was 1.7766. So it's slightly down. Interesting thing about both of these last two millages here that we're talking about on the hold harmless, this is really the first year we've seen the effect of the exempted industrial and commercial personal property. Commercial's been there for a while, it's in our area, it's the industrial one that's big. On the hold harmless, the state will make up that part of the hold harmless that we lose due to that loss of taxable dollars. On the, and you'll see it when I show you the foundation allowance, the state will also have to pick up part of the share because we know what the foundation allowance would be, and I'll show that to you. The local can't provide as much because that's been removed and it's exempt from us putting taxes on. But as far as hold harmless is our concern, we'll get that full amount and all the taxable value, including the industrial, personal property and commercial that's not been exempted. The last one, which really isn't part of our general fund, but it's our bond, and we've always referred to it kind of like the 2.95 because that was our first year last year and that's what it was. We got back our information from our bond consultants and they're suggesting that we do 2.88 mills on all the properties for the bond. It, I know counterintuitive a little bit when you say the taxable values go down because with a bond, you cannot get any of the exempt personal property back, it's, can't be taxed by the bond. Really, the reason that it dropped, and we did call and talk to them about that because it just didn't make sense, when they actually started the whole process of the bond and were looking at what they thought the trends would be, they knew, if you remember, we were the first districts that were encountering a bond and this exempt personal property. And they knew that it was going to drop on us. They had planned on it dropping like 13%, dropped about 8.25. So the, the rest of the property, it grew more than they thought it would be. So the next couple of years are not dropping as far as they thought, and then after that point, it's going to kind of level itself out, but that's the recommendation. We did talk with them about could you levy the 2.95 still and change some things, and you've got to be careful when you're levying your millage to make sure you're not over-storing, like you have a fund balance going with your bonds, there's a legal limit there that, that you can't do, there's only a couple of reasons. So 2.88, which means when you see this summer tax resolution, it'll be 1.44 for both of the collections. But pretty standard millages there, just want to update you on those to show you where we're at on those.
And Bob, for abundance of clarity, because when Mike and I went on the stump on the bond thing a lot, we, you get into the weeds and we try not to get into weeds, but if people took you into weeds, you'd be glad to explain everything. But tonight, I'll make it very clear to everybody listening, we were allowed to ask for so much money, based on the property value at the time, that worked at 2.95 mills. We are still only able to get from the taxpayers that stipulated amount of money. And if property value changes, we have to change the millage accordingly.
Yep, and as our consultant, that's why I have a consultant that looks at it every year as to where you stand at that point in time, is for that very reason to be analyzed and make sure you're not overtaxing and that you're getting that amount of money.
So I was concerned if we lowered, would we eventually have to raise above 2.95?
Goes the other way.
Which could happen if you had to pay your debt, but he is projecting this is safe and we won't have to do that, but of course, it is 1617 years out and that's difficult to fully project.
Then of course, we have to make some revenue assumptions as we're going to put together the budget. It's relatively quiet here, which I didn't know if it would be because the state kind of didn't agree there for a little bit, and then they came back pretty strong when they were conferencing, came back. But the big factors always are the enrollment. So I'm just letting you know that our assumption's going to be that we will lose 55 students that will come out with a blended count of 7685. We're currently this year at about 7,740, that's the drop of 55 then. Our consultants and everybody else we work with look at our numbers, it's, it's an interesting year because with, especially the Dow, Dow Corning, even the consultant that can't quite put a handle on what that's going to mean. So when we looked at the numbers, that would be Mike and myself, the agenda, Brian, you know, our consultants have a low from 7634 up to a high of 7838 when they had this budget. We talked about 7711, that would be in a normal year. Well, this might not be, we're much safer picking what we think is a safe number. Here to tell you, it can always go higher, lower, we don't know, but we feel that's a pretty good estimate of where we'll be. Still, it's an interesting thing because we went this year with the same enrollment, and if you remember, that added to our revenues this year. We're not even as low as we predicted a year ago where we thought we were going to be. So it's, and you'll see that, I'll show you some slides so you can see how the enrollment's gone there. There are, we are scheduled to get a $60 per pupil foundation increase, and that foundation increase will take our foundation allowance to $8,351. That next bullet goes with it. When Prop 8 was passed, the hold harmless districts are restricted on the increase in their foundation allowance to the rate of inflation or the other amount. This is a 2X formula, by the way, so we're getting 60 and there'll be other districts getting 120. And so what they had to do was bring in a categorical offset payment to make it up because if they would have held the hold harmlessness to the rate of inflation, since it was so low a year ago, we'd be looking at like $15 a student, which would take us way behind what everybody else was going to be getting. So there's like a $45 offset payment, it's going to be in a category, you've heard us talk lots about 20Js and the last couple of years, we get 20F, this is 20M. A lot of them wanted to use 20J, but some didn't want to go back to that term, they just were afraid what that means. So they didn't. So you'll get that amount coming back. And then the last bullet point is an important one, but it's been pretty standard here lately. There are two forms of 147 money that we've been getting. One's a cost offset, comes directly to us, helps to pay part of our portion. The other is a stabilization rate that picks up the difference between where they've capped districts, which is a high of 24.94, and they capped the rest of the way, which is usually sometimes another 10 or 11% where the true rate's running at the time. So that's been coming, that's the 147C money that's there. So those are both coming. If they stopped supporting us that way, that, that would be a noticeable amount of money. And so the addition is, wouldn't it be so, so important? Not as many categoricals now, so that foundation is really all right there. So you don't have the best practices and a few of those other ones that were out there. There's still some, but not like there were. And if you remember over time too, I would just point out to you, remember, even when you see that foundation increase, when you take everything together, if you remember in the last couple of years, last year we got a $70 one that really amounted to 25. And the year before, I think it was 25, it's really minus four. So you have to take kind of the whole budget there, and sometimes even as we go, like I mentioned earlier, there's still 20F money there that we're not quite sure. We know what it was used for, this year, we don't know how much of that will be there. So could we off in revenue a little bit? We could be. We are down the low side, like, we wouldn't get that and took it out, but it could be that's in there. So it's a little more complicated at times. Those major assumptions though, I wanted to show you, this is enrollment. It shows you both 1415 and 1516 and where we're predicting for 1617. I would kind of leave 2008, '09 up there because it allows you to, see the last year, we got 20J, it's not our big enrollment year or anything, but that's the last year of 20J as reference. You can see the last two years, we stabilized quite a bit, and you can see that predicted going down to 7, 685. We do think that this year, you might wonder, well, how come we were off a little bit? We've really tried to analyze it, but it was a bigger kindergarten class, we would tell you that. And part of that has to do with young fives that we added in, which is kindergarten. And the other part would be the secondary, I would say, just in a general statement, has not lost students as fast as the elementary. It was kind of people looking at classes saying, they're getting smaller and it's working its way through elementary. And it got to the secondary, it hasn't dropped quite as fast. I think part of that is because a lot of the alternative forms out there, parochial schools, et cetera, a lot of them still end when the students become a secondary age. So it still might be coming and you can see some of it happening in middle school, hasn't got into high school, but it's not happening at quite as fast a rate, so that's where we stand now. The other one is the trend line, which I thought you might appreciate seeing because when you see that one, it's, you could certainly see it flattening out at the end, which is very good. I looked ahead at our consultant and he carries us out with recommendations or at least estimates out to 2021, that school year, and even if I took the low there, he has us about at 7,400. I know we've talked in the past that, you know, we thought the bottom was somewhere between 7.1 and 7.2, always hard to know at this point. You know, maybe we're doing a few things there and we're looking at it. I would guess we haven't bottomed yet, but certainly slowing down makes a, makes a big difference on where we are financially. So you can really see that on, on that drawing as you look out. The other part we talked about was that per pupil foundation allowance revenue source. And so again, just wanted to show you that. As you look through it, again, it's the 2X formula this year, we got the extra $60 added on. Our hold harmless millage never changes, so you'll see that stay the same. The local millage that we can collect, remember, should be down and it, and it is, you see it because of that exempt personal property. And so our share, remember, of that local that you can collect would be down a little bit from a year ago, and the state aid payment would come up a little bit because again, we're going to get 8,351. And we've talked about this before, you know, they first, that's what you're going to get, that's your foundation allowance, they see how much you can raise locally, and then they fill in, is basically what the state does. And so when they exempted the personal property, the local can't collect as much money, and so the state's got to pick up their share. At the same time though, I'd say that the 41531, that is protected, we're going to keep getting that, and so when we don't, can't generate that, that's where the state's going to make that part up, whatever we have. All right, so general fund is there in front of you, the revenue, guess that's the first number you always want to remember, about, about 78.7. Okay? You'll see that it really, if I brought the same chart from a year ago, it looked pretty much the same except the state's up a little bit, the local's down a little bit, and actually the other, other local revenue is just up a little bit. So there's a little bit of difference of where it's coming from, but not a, a great amount. But it looks like our revenues would be $78,736 and $798. So then we come to the expenditure side, what kind of assumptions do we have there? We continued our balance, our budget procedure. We were doing it for quite the same purpose, remember, that's kind of like zero-based budgeting where we bring everybody in from buildings, departments, anybody that controls part of the budget. And we really have them come in and talk to us about what are you proposing, where are you at? We ask them to stay close to spending the same amount of money they, they did this year, but sometimes there's reasons somebody would increase it a little bit and go down. But it's still kept us pretty much exactly the same as we were a year ago in those categories. So, so that part's really good for us. There are two things that are going to show up when I get to the actual expenditures. One is there's a decrease in the salaries and retirement accounts due to our early separation incentive. And I really mean by that is you are taking roughly 46 teachers, I want to make sure I get the number right, some of the highest pay that we have and you're bringing them and at much lower pays. So when you talk about salaries and retirement then that's based on those salaries, even a little bit of the FICA that's based on those salaries, those numbers are all down. I think it's the best savings you'll see on salary for a while. This doesn't duplicate itself because from here on out, people will move up on their steps and scales and things will move forward. So it's a good year to save, but it's not something that can be duplicated year after year after year, as far as controlling it that way. The other thing is decrease in the medical costs, and there's really two reasons. Don't forget, we went from a self-funded plan to a premium-based plan. We did get some savings on the premium base because part of that was they not, they didn't charge us the full amount of taxes that you have to pay on some of those things. They, the company itself picked up part of it. But the biggest difference medical costs you're going to see, they're going to run right around a million dollars, and it's because we were doing the runoff of our self-insured plan. In other words, we are still paying claims today that were incurred last year but have never been paid. And medical providers have one full year to bill us for those, and those all go on the old medical plan. So all of a sudden, it's sort of like, like I said, my NALG would be paying two medical plans at the same time. I got to pay the premium to keep protecting people, but I got to pay off the part we were self-insured on. It's because we're self-insured. It worked the other way when we first started. When we went from premium to self-insured, we saved for a while. But that's so many years ago, it's now like we put that money away and said, it'll always be there from when we end on the other end. So the runout is running, pointing to three bates, 950,000, it's pointing over a million, which is kind of what we've had on a annual basis, and we still have basically six months to go, but it's getting smaller every month as you go. The big runoff costs happen almost immediately in the first two, two and a half months, highest pharmaceutical ones right away, most of the big ones are there. But you, always amazes me, you go three weeks at one rate and then all of a sudden, something will pop up that somebody just got around to billing this on. For example, they always tell me, if you follow the bills, the U of M hospital's one of the slowest ones to bill. So once in a while, you'll get a big bill just because they just haven't billed you fully for, for the procedures there. Those two big areas caused the biggest drop in expenditures, and you'll see that pretty good. We do have all the positive effects, remember, it is a two-year program, we've been trying to run here to kind of get our financial ship in order. We're trying to make sure we didn't dip into fund balance as we go forward, that's really where we've been trying to get, balance it without going in there. And with the various employee groups that we had, affiliated and non-affiliated, their reductions continue to be reflected in the budget, they've kind of helped us get a strong footing, so that's in there too. It's hard to identify every little one, but they're all there, from the people that give furlough days to the people that pay more for their medical premiums, all part of the concessionary packages that we ask people to give, retirement incentives, early notifications are, are lower, there's just a variety of different things out there that, that they've done. And like always, I think since Mr. Sherrill's been here, the staffing patterns reflect our process of evaluating vacancies, reducing whenever possible. That's without sacrificing opportunity and without sacrificing quantity, that's quality. We don't ever try to do that, but we try to look at positions and say, you know, could we get to this point in time by not filling that? And people don't think that amounts to very much, but as you've seen in the last couple of years in our budget, when we're getting the bigger variances sometimes, it's because we did exactly that. And it doesn't mean that we, you know, you don't gather up and say, we really need to put someone in that position, it just means that you're just being a little more cautious when you look at all of it. And it makes a difference, it makes a difference. All right, so here are the proposed expenditure changes here, if you will, and they're just divided into the various categories, but if you look at salary, remember, I told you you'd see quite a savings. So you're seeing a savings of, of 1.6 million, and the benefits kind of follow along, that's where you're seeing the medical. Retirement shows up in that one too, so that's the 1.1. Purchased services is up, but if you put it with the supplies and materials, one of the things in changing directors of fiscal services is they all have ways using the school accounting code that they like to record things. For example, in Midland, she's taught me this in just a couple of months, it's pretty good, she would say forever, we just keep putting postage, for example, into the category of supplies and materials. She says, that's really a purchased service, and you really need to put it there, and if you, if you record them, it doesn't hurt anything, it's not like it's wrong one way or the other, but that just makes it easier to access that money. But when you're looking up here then, all of a sudden, it looks like, wow, we have to purchase services. But if you put them with the supplies and materials, it's really up a little bit, but it's kind of part of the cost of things that we have to purchase anyways, so it's there. Contracted services, pretty close to where it was. The capital outlay's about the same, the other, the leases and gifts, that one's a little higher because as we look forward, that's where, like for example, our PYP, I'd say ongoing fees are going to come from, we have used all our PYP grant money, so that's got to come someplace from the general fund, so it's up a little bit and some of that's attributed to that. And then just the outgoing transfers are the normal things that happen back and forth between ourselves and ESA and different places, that can make a difference. But the bottom number you're going to look there is the one that's the 1617, the second column over, it's at 77,675,967. If you just look at expenditures year to year, it's down about 2.5 million. Okay? And again, if you remember the revenues on the other side, that was at 78, expenditures at 77, so you can tell if you're sneak peeking ahead here, we're going to be able to have a year where we're not going to jump into fund balance to, to get there. Again, this is just showing you those general fund expenditures by account, and they're really just different ways to look at it. This one does it by the different account sheet I've got there, so I'm looking at salaries, which of course would be down, I'm comparing this to this year's budget, salaries would be down, FICA a little bit down, retirement would be down, medical the same way, some of the other categories, not so much, but very similar as you go around. So like when I just went through that retirement a year ago, it was market 18%, 17.2 now, where the medical was, was 8.9 a year ago, and it's 8.1. So you kind of see where some of those bigger savings came from. If you're still thinking in terms of how much cost goes into personnel versus other, it doesn't vary a whole lot, we've been at that 85, 86% for quite a while and it kind of stays the same, very slightly, but pretty much the same as that you're used to seeing. And then if you want to take another look at that, this is by function, it's just another way to look at our expenditures. So this one's looking at, you know, how much went to classroom instruction, student support, instructional support, you can see where our expenditures are. And again, because salaries are down a little bit, the classroom instruction's down a little bit, some of that also ended up in instructional support. It's kind of interesting sometimes where those retirements and salaries differences come in, but they're in the classroom and in instructional support. Everything else is pretty much the same, building administration's up slightly because one of the things we did a year ago, in all honesty, is, is we cut building administration warranty about a position 2.5, and we're just right in the ship, and that's good for all kids because that makes them run smoother, and so we did that. Everything else is pretty much the same, maybe a percentage point or two, but not very much different, so again, you can see where we're at there. If anyone wants to see the general fund snapshot, it's usually the only one they remember if we go through all of that. So you're going down there, it's just, you know, where are we at here? The first column is really the current budget as we know. Now, I know that's February, and I know two weeks from now, we'll be telling you something a little different because we'll know where we are in June, and the audit's going to come, it's going to tell you something a little different again. It's the one thing I would tell you, since I've been doing the job, that seems backwards to me, but it's all happening and you're doing a lot of predicting before you, you know where you're going to be, and a couple of months later, you know where you were. So I would just point out to you, when we, when we headed the adjustment in February, that's where we took you. And again, I'd stop you at the top, third line down, excess revenue, you know, it is very possible, if we have what's called the budget variance there, that we will not dip into the fund balance. But you need to know that as far as what's budgeted in February, we're still scheduled to dip in for 572,000. And if you look over in the June budget, which would be the new 1617, when I put in red up here, you'll see that, that it's scheduled to have a million dollars at the end of that without any variance. Okay? The variance is just that, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that because I want to make it kind of clear. But as you look at it, the variance, we're, we were predicting 1%, I always want you to know, variance is just that, it can go up or down. The good years are when your variance on your revenues was wrong, and you got more, and your expenditure's the other way, and I love it when they do that. They can offset each other, you need to know that, and it has happened. And some things are, some people will look up there and say, my goodness, the revenues are down 893, what's, what's happening? Well, you remember, we were off on the students and then we were on on the students, and now we think the students are going to go again. So it's, everything we gained in the one year, which is great, will be gone in the next set of revenues. So it's just this matter of, of kind of going through with some unknowns there. So you can see that anticipated surplus or shortfall, in both cases, the February and the new 1617 budget, would add money to our fund balance. And you can see the anticipated spendable fund balance at the bottom there. Now, a couple of things, and then I'll talk about it individually, I want you to know that even though it says spendable fund balance at the bottom, and I guess I think this is part of my job here, you know, we've made good progress on the financial picture, but I guess my job is to make sure, I always throw caution in there, I'm like the wet blanket that lets, lets you know, things change in a hurry, and we've made some wonderful progress on where we're at. But everybody needs to realize that, maybe it feels like overnight, but it's not overnight to get to this point. And if you're not careful, you can get right back to where you were in a very short period of time. So all I want to point out here is, when you see that surplus, you see that spendable fund balance. The surplus is just that, it's anticipated, but things can happen, that's with a variance. You can have no variance. Now historically, we've actually had 2% or 3%, I hope both those numbers are wrong in the sense of we get more variance and we're putting more money away, because that can only mean good things as we look forward to that. By the same token, as you look there, everyone goes, ooh, you got that much to spend and look at your percentages, especially in Midland. It is a strong possibility that a lot of that, while spendable, is restricted. And restricted means just that, somebody has granted us money with a purpose and we will spend it for that, we can't spend it for anything else. So for example, right now, the biggest thing we'd have, biggest thing we have had is IB. What we're going to have is the STEM grants coming in. And so when you look at that, and I have it on the next page, but I think it was 1.2 million of what looks like even at the end of this year, is in the fund balance to spend is not there. So you're dropping that 10.7 more to like the 9.1 if you were actually looking at that. So I thought, I'll just run three quick slides by you here, a couple, it's more than three. I wanted to show you the general fund history, and that's the thing I want you to look at. If you notice there, the blues revenue, oranges expenditures, and the gray bar at the end is the ending fund balance. If you look there, any time that that orange bar is higher than the blue one, you were taking money out of fund balance. So people wonder, why do you want to have some money put away? Pretty simple to me, there's nine years worth of date up there. 1617, I think is going to be a definite no with what I saw in the budget. But let's talk back even to 1516 where we're saying, oh, I think we're going to be to the good there. If you remember, when we started the year, that's not where we said we would be on that. So we were deficits, we were going to go into fund balance with the beginning budget for this year. So as you look at that, I think it's either six out of nine, if I'm really generous, it's seven out of nine if I'm not, where the fund balance is what's gotten us through some pretty tough times. So I want you to know that there's a purpose to it, and I think when you look at it, I'm not, I would always ask people, where do you think we would be without the fund balance? Really smoothed out a lot of things, we've been able to keep a lot of offerings that you wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. So I think that's important. If you look at it more in a, a graph, if you will, I can tell you, I think I went back and I think it was 98 was the high year at 24.16, that was the highest you've ever had in fund balance. You got a little blip in '03 to almost 24, and about the last time you were in the 20% in your fund balance was in '05. And then you'll see basically downward trends, and then it's a little jump there, but for the last, oh, since 2011, it's basically been a downward trend on your. but for the last, oh, since two thousand and eleven, it's basically been a downward trend in your fund balance. And in some of those years, if you think back to what was budgeted, where we ended up, that variance helping us be a lot bigger drop. Real nice little curve at the end there, though. I mean, that's something, that's the positive part of that, you're putting some back.
That's the hope for a curve.
Yes, it is. So I just thought, real quick, fund balance, again, it is important, and it's good to have it there. Do not forget, the state's early warning requirement occurs about five percent fund balance, if you get down to that. And that means you're gonna be doing some paperwork, and they're gonna be taking a look at you, and if they deem you in trouble, then that's a whole nother issue to deal with. We do not want to be there, okay? Let alone the manpower it takes to do that, it's what they control at that point, which we don't wanna be. What's the appropriate amount of fund balance? I'm not here to tell you, there's so many different opinions. But I would think most people would get you somewhere between eleven and fifteen. Depends if it's good times, bad times, where you're at. But without that much, you know, it doesn't take much to go from ten or nine down to seven, down to five. So I think that's more likely where most people would, but again, that's a matter of opinion as you look, and board's opinion. And then again, please don't forget that when you look at those fund balances up there, that, yes, there's the non-spendable part. By the way, non-spendables typically things like, we bought a semi-load of paper, and they always run out just in May. You don't need a semi, but you can get a good deal on a semi of paper. So you do that, and so some of that cost goes over to next year. So it's spent, but it hasn't been paid out because it's into the next year. Hundred and thirty thousand. But you'll see the grants alone, sitting at the end of this year, one point two. So there's a big amount there. And like I said, if you were to go up there, our February estimate would really be about one point two less than that. It'd be closer to a nine percent for that to start with. And don't forget, where we end this year is gonna have an effect on that second one. Good or bad, we could have more in there by that time, if people were gonna say, well, he doesn't know what he's doing. That's the fluctuation that we're not gonna have, and not know until we get there. Those would all be good things in my mind, okay? If it goes higher, but you just need to know that that's there.
So Bob, just to thoroughly understand that, right now with the non-spendable and the restricted giving that's gonna come out in terms of an unrestricted fund balance at the end of this year, we're looking more like a seven point two?
Yep, about seven point two.
And if everything came true in our budgeting, and we had that same restricted money sitting there yet, which we won't, but we did, we'd be at a nine point one next year.
Yep. That's where we start from, if you will, even though you're gonna have a budget that looks like we're gonna start from a big amount.
Understood. Okay. So we're in that nine to eleven percent range?
Yep. The variance, let's talk about that for a minute. Both revenues and expenditures affect the variance up, down, or in some case offsetting. I think that's important. We are so used to historically, and that's a good thing, that we don't spend everything that we budgeted. We get a little more money than we thought, 'cause we try to be conservative. You wouldn't run it the other way, for you meet, you know, we had the one year, if anyone remembers, Mike certainly remembers, where we were supposed to lose under fifty students, and three hundred didn't show up. Now, all of a sudden, if it wasn't for, I think it was buses we did not buy that year, we would have been having some big variances at the end that we wouldn't have liked in the wrong direction. Do we normally get two to three percent? Absolutely, I hope we get that both years. We're being conservative, 'cause it's so hard to know when we've kept them tight on supplies and materials. How tight do we cap them? And so we don't know what kind of variance there. And our people are very good about not spending stuff that they don't need. So sometimes we get a nice variance coming back. The other part is, don't forget, the biggest factors for us are changes during the fiscal year, student enrollment that doesn't follow prediction. That's usually the problem. I mean, dropping enrollment's a problem, but when they don't follow prediction, that's when you really get some variances.
And this is a very fuzzy year.
Yes, very much so. And then the other part is the state funding change. And I would tell you that, on the state funding change, if you remember, I think it's two years, maybe it's a year ago now, two years. They gave us one forty-seven D money, which we thought was gonna be like six hundred and fifty thousand. They made one payment, hundred and fifty thousand, and said, oops, we don't have enough money. If you remember, they canceled the rest. That's a variation that, thank goodness, we were big enough and Roman stayed, but that could have been something that would have been very hurtful to the budget. So the state funding does change. We get new governmental mandates or rulings all the time. Without us trying to do anything, minimum wage, I'm saying it's not a good thing, but it's been marching up, and we pay that, and it's been going up each year, so that's a percentage that we don't normally do. And they just made a ruling too on what constitutes a manager and who qualifies for overtime and not. And we will have some people that we'll have to watch very closely, 'cause they'll fall into that. They do not make, in fact, they're almost doubled if we're calling right now. It used to be like a twenty-three thousand. Anyone that made more than that was classified as a manager and didn't have the overtime regulations. Now it's gonna be like forty-seven thousand, so it's gonna jump in a hurry on us. Those are things you can't plan for till they hit you, and then we'll just work the best we can. Major repairs, we've been lucky. Sometimes I wonder when I see some of the things go by, but we've been lucky not to have a real, real bad major repair. Put ourselves in pretty good shape with a little bit of sinking fund we kept, and with the bond, it's helped tremendously. But if you're not prepared for that. And I'm not, the special education cost, it's just because the cost of special education runs relatively high per student. So it doesn't take much fluctuation in a special ed population to send the cost one way or the other. And I put the ESA because they provide a lot of the programs. So it'll be all of a sudden, we're getting money from them, or we're giving more money to them. And it can be just a matter of more students in a certain program. So it's still a variance that we just don't know till you get there. Lastly, the excessive revenue part, if you will. Let me take you back just one other time too. And the variance, I wanna put on one thing on this slide, 'cause I don't wanna misinterpret it. I went back to get fourteen fifteen numbers, just so you could see how much variance you get. And if you noticed, I took the original fourteen fifteen budget, then went to the March adjustment, and then went to the audited numbers. So if you look at what we predicted, we were gonna have for a surplus or a variance, and see how it changed every time what we ended up with. Again, those are good things, but it's just that volatile at times. And so I want to point out, those are all numbers that are, we're not estimating anything. That's what we said in June of two thousand and fourteen, what we said in March of fifteen, and then the audit told us, we didn't reach in for three point two, we didn't reach in for two point one, and we ended up with four hundred and ninety-three. Remember, that was real good news back then, so. But that's again, when we put a budget out there, things can change, good or bad. It says we haven't very often been telling you about the other extreme, like we're not gonna go in as far, we're gonna put more there. All right, then the excessive revenue. There's really two things I want you to know, and again, I just put them back up here. You look at the surpluses and you go, okay, we're finishing June of seventeen, it's the end of our two years, it looks like we're gonna put another one point eight in there, if we get a variance. I want you to know two things. When we asked employees for concessions, part of what we did, and if you think about it, when you ask for concessions, it's really tough to convince people what you need. And so one of the things we said is, we don't wanna overreach, we're not trying to penalize people. So depending on the employee group, and it was different for every group, as to what they gave, what they participated in this, we had, you can call it a budget surplus protection, you could think of it in the car companies as a profit sharing, but we said, listen, if that time, when we run the audit after fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, we have increased our fund balance, a budget surplus after the audits, then we would have a very simple formula to return any excess of funds. And we talked about splitting it fifty-fifty. Fifty would stay in the fund balance, we would make a sizable gain in our fund balance still. And the other fifty percent, that would be divided up between the various employee groups, in whatever method, it depends which group you're talking about, is that, you know, some is, when we get to that point, we'll talk about it, and some will be equally between people. Now, it'd be like a one-time, you wanna call a stipend check, or just a one-time deal. So when you start looking at that, you know, it's one point eight, we get a great variance, and it exceeds more than that. It won't be the worst thing that ever happened, 'cause without the employees helping us with the plan, that would have been a tough way to get there, I don't know where we would be. So I at least wanna have you point that one out. And the other one, and I guess it's the part that worries me sometimes more than anything else, is the cost moving forward. Some of the concessions expire. I mean, we asked people to take furlough days, we said, hey, you can increase your medical co-pays. That was not meant to be forever, it was just, how can you help us reach your part of the give? And if you remember, that's what we literally did, said, here's where we are, here's our deficit, what can you give to offset that? And people did that, the teachers had steps and categories froze. So there's all those things that are gonna kind of undo themselves when we reach seventeen, eighteen. And additionally, don't forget this, I don't care which company we pick, medical costs, I've yet to see them go the other way. They are always going up, and they're usually, if they're single digits or high singles, and it's not unusual, ten or eleven percent. So that's coming. Cost of living increases, I don't mean we pay anybody that way, but just materials, everything else go up based on something out there. There's price index of some kind, and energy cost increase. Now, some of the bond work will help us fight those, but for example, we had a great year on both natural gas and gasoline, diesel in fact, that didn't happen every year. So you gotta be prepared for those. So as you look out there, I was just using an example in my own head when I sat there and said, okay, if we ended up putting a surplus away of three million in the two years, that'd still be one point five that's going into the fund balance equity. And a one point five that gets split up to everybody else, which I understand. Now, that one point five that went in the fund balance, and this is the part I wanna make sure everybody's clear on, don't forget, something as simple as the steps and category changes for teachers, a lot of them are stockpiled. That's not a bad thing, but they're ready for a category change, it's just been frozen on it. Typically, steps and lane changes, as we call them, are about five hundred thousand that it'll take. There's a lot of other category, I mentioned some of the furlough days and medical. I'm gonna guess somewhere between a hundred thousand, hundred and fifty thousand there. And then if you were to get a ten percent increase in medical, six hundred thousand. So again, I don't wanna be the negative one on everything there, but I wanna put a little caution in there. And I guess what I'm saying to you is, we've taken some big positive steps to correct the budget. And it's really nice to be able to tell you that I think at sixteen seventeen with that budget, you don't have to reach into the fund balance. But it's taken, you know, two years of support from everybody, from the board on down to every employee group to get there. And, you know, if I could tell everybody we're not totally out of the woods without crying wolf, you know, I, when I think about it, we would need going forward, is you need the state to be steady in its increases, the foundation allowances. Sooner or later, we need a steady student enrollment, or you need to hit the bottom, you gotta study that out. And we have to have slow growth in district expenses. That means everything, at least in my mind, not just supplies and materials, but wages and everything else. If you get those, I think you can put together a pretty decent budget and move forward. And I think we've taken a big corrective step with those two. Before I leave this and take to the question slides, you know, it's impossible to put together a budget without everyone's help. I mean, it starts with the people who control the budgets, that when you tell them, they have to meet you to build our budgets, they're not always smiling at you, because they know that's a lot of work, and they know we're gonna ask questions. But I couldn't do it, my administrative assistant, Tracy Reed, especially on all the personnel side, the business office, Lori Holbe, who's brand new in the walk-in when she did, and we were able to put this together. Taken a lot of work, but you don't do it with all those people helping. So it takes the business office, it takes human resources, it takes everybody's department to pull all those numbers together. And it's a crazy time, and if I didn't thank them, I get to talk about it, but they're the ones that do all the hard lifting and hard work there. But if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's what your sixteen seventeen budgets look like.
Thank you.
It's encouraging.
Yeah, so I guess this will open it up for public hearing.
Well, I'm the old guy, so I'll comment. Been around a long time, this is one of the brighter ones we've seen. You worry about the pent-up expense that's gonna hit us in two years, when the dam breaks loose. Hopefully, we're in a good position when that dam undoes a little bit. Make sure everybody understands what restricted fund balance is versus the total fund balance, it's not all there. But it's nice that you said, Bob, we were dealing with the world's worst business model. A fixed cost business with a variable, highly variable revenue. It's the worst thing you can do from a prop A funding mechanism standpoint. But we've got the variables down pretty close now, if you really think about it. You know, on an eighty million dollar budget, we're fussing over plus or minus two million noise range. Now, when you're on the edge, two million's a lot of money. But student count, we're not gonna be off six hundred. And hopefully, state funding, they're only giving you sixty dollars, they can't be off a whole lot unless they wanna take a whole bunch back. So I think now we can manage the noise much better, because we know better where we're landed. And I hope we get to stay in that landing zone for a little bit.
I appreciate the thoroughness of the budget, the whole process, and everything it took to put this together. I don't have any questions, I feel good about where we are. And the detail that you've shown us over the past ten years in many instances makes me feel good about where we're going as well. I appreciate the caution, I feel great about where we're at, and I think the school, the administration, the teachers, all the employee groups need to be commended for all the work that it took everyone to get here. But I do appreciate your cautionary approach, because I think there's a lot of things we don't know that can happen the next couple of years, and I think all of Midland is kind of watching, so, thank you.
Well, and I, to thank you, I appreciate all the background. This will be the first time since I've been on the board that we are proposing a budget that doesn't go into our savings account. Thanks for explaining everything very well. I mean, it's, once again, as I've said before, cautiously optimistic, because we were just less than a year ago, not sure if we were gonna have to borrow to make our September payroll. So although this looks very positive, it hasn't been that long since we've been, you know, very, very cautionary. You know, I always, I look at this in millions and millions of dollars, it's just a difference from my home budget, so it seems like a lot, but we spend a lot too. And so although that fund balance looks large, it's not when you look at it as a percent of what we actually spend. And that's, you know, something we always have to keep in mind, that millions of dollars, it's comparable to what you spend. It's not the absolute amount that sounds so large, so, I thank you very much.